YouTube where it can also be seen later on. So with that, I'm going to hand the agenda over to Council President Dotry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everybody is in attendance. So let's go ahead and get to the Civic Center Alternatives. Russ and Mr. Lo, you're on. Okay, so I'm sorry, Stowe.
Thank you, Council. I just wanted to run through the Civic Center Alternatives with you tonight. Let you have an opportunity to discuss the project a little bit. And then look at some of the citizen comments that we received at the last open house. With that, Kelly, am I good to share my screen?
You will be in just a moment. Let me. Okay, you're good.
Okay, does everyone see my screen at this point?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, let me go to, there we go. Okay, so just to reiterate, tonight, we'll just talk about where we've been with this project, discuss the alternatives a little bit. Give Council an opportunity to talk about the community preferences. And then look at some of the community preferences, and then we'll talk about your preferred alternative and what the next steps are going to be. So as we've talked about in the past, several tasks have been completed to date. There's been a preliminary market analysis. Some demographic analysis has been done. The city and library space needs have been completed. You've seen some preliminary cost estimates. You've also seen a document that discovered some of the construction delivery options. There's been a couple of public engagement processes up to this point. And we're at the point now where we have the preliminary concept alternatives. So some of the common design elements that you'll see tonight. The architectural goal would be to have some sort of a contemporary Northwest design. A desire for welcoming public spaces, flexible spaces. Some of the things we've heard from the community in the first outreach were neighborhood cafe. Looking at cost effective, sustainable buildings with low maintenance. An environmentally healthy site as far as site components, outdoor space. How do we use the stormwater as an amenity, easy access to the site and adequate parking? So there are three alternatives that have been put forward. The first one is a shared space alternative. The second alternative is a compact design with a three-story city hall. And alternative three is the bookend with separate buildings. So the first alternative is the shared building option. You'll see in the center of the drawing, which would be the shared common space. That might be something like a large meeting room, maybe some kitchen areas. Means community meeting type of space with the city hall and the library having their primarily separate functions. But sharing again, some meeting space and probably some utility space as well as parking. It definitely has the interconnected goal that's been talked about. It maintains a single story library that's been a desire, at least from Snow Isle. Would have a two-story city building to reduce its footprint. Tries to maximize some of the views, minimizes some of the wetland buffer impact. And does have some ability for drive up Dropbox for the library. And this is just an example that shows some of the pathways and the connectivity. Going through the alternative and where the community gathering spaces would be, as well as some shared amenities like stormwater. So as the Stowe group looked at some of the alternatives, they put this scoring matrix on each alternative. To sort of show you which has the maximum amount of shared space. How are they as far as wetland sensitivity? What type of outdoor space do they have cost and private development? So in each alternative, you'll see a variation of this. So with alternative one, there is high agency participation in shared space. This one results in less wetland buffer impacts. There is a large amount of community open space. The cost is moderate and the private development potential in this alternative is low. Alternative two would be the most compact option. Where the city hall and library would share a singular footprint. The city hall portion would go up to three stories. Where the library portion would be a single story. And again, it would have some common shared spaces like alternative one. And the picture you'll see on the right, those are really demonstrative of any of the options, just showing what's possible on the site. The gathering space here is constricted based on alternative one. It still has some paths, some shared common spaces for rainwater, stormwater detention. But it leaves the northern parcel open for future potential development. So as we look at agency partnership, it maximizes agency partnership. This option does have the most impacts to wetland buffers. It does have still some community outdoor space, less than alternative one. The cost is also moderate and the private development potential in this one is the highest. Alternative three creates three, creates two separate buildings. And the most separation between the two functions where there would be separate systems, no common footprint. There is still shared parking, shared open space. And as you will see, there's also shared gathering space. And uses the same types of site alternatives for stormwater. Detention is an amenity that you saw in alternative one. But this option fully uses both parcels. As we look again at our metrics, this has low agency partnership, other than the shared parking and stormwater. It has probably the least amount of impact or moderate impacts on wetland buffers. It has a large amount of community open space, probably the most. The cost is going to be higher in this one than the other alternatives we've looked at. And it has low potential for private development. So this is just so you can look at all three slides side by side. And maybe I'll pause here and invite Mr. Stowe to provide any comments up to this point. Before we move on to the next slides and the council's conversation.
Thanks, Russ. I don't have any comments just at the moment. Be glad to address any questions that Council might have. Thank you.
Hey, Bob, Steve, you have a question for you about the money that was allocated from legislature for the civic campus? And what, I'm not totally clear on what strings may be attached to that as far as how much of that's going directly to the library? How much is going into the civic, you know, city portion of that? Can you elaborate on that?
You know, I'm not familiar with the funding scenario in terms of the whatever grant opportunities that the city or the library has received for any planning.
Councilmember Ewing, that's my understanding that it's just design dollars specifically for the library, not specifically tied to this project.
So a question that I have is when you're looking at the costs and then you look at the private development potential. Does a private development potential revenue feed into the cost of the project? Or are they two separate issues?
Two, two separate issues. I mean, we're forecasting, I think you'll probably show later in a slide. You know, traditional design bid build could be a project cost between 25.8 to 27.9 million. Compared to more of a private sector approach or P3 delivery approach, about $3 million less. So any private revenue producing venture that comes onto the site with you, which would be the alternative two. The value of that land is what we forecasted would be about $900,000, given that probably only 75% of it's going to be developable. Given the wetland buffer that needs to, needs to be placed on that site. So can you reduce some of your expenses or at least have a revenue stream to pay for some of the capital cost? Absolutely. But it's not significant in terms of the grand scheme or the order of magnitude in terms of the cost of the facility itself. I think that the bigger element for producing a private use on the site is really one of creation, place making. And adding another amenity to a civic use. That would just again, add more benefit toward the, for those who visit the library or visit the city hall, coffee shop, cafe type scenario.
And that is the option that you'll see through the public comments that has come up most often. Again, it is the place making. I'll move back to the slide on costs and this will give you a little bit more of a focal point. So alternative one, if you want to go to the line, the further line down. It's going to be in the range of $23 million. Also, alternative two, which becomes that more compact footprint, the price actually is going to go up. The three-story component is going to be a more costly build. And then as you move over to alternative three, you're looking at about the mid $24 million range. So all three alternatives are within about a million dollars of each other. Again, alternative two would allow for the offset and the sale of that northern parcel. But the magnitude of the overall cost, it's not. I won't say it's not significant, but when you look at the magnitude of the project, it probably isn't your biggest consideration. Any other comments on the cost table before we move on? Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, I hope I'm not asking a question you can't answer, Mr. Stowe. But first of all, the difference between this project and the project of 2018 is day and night. Thank you very much. But one thing that didn't, I'm wondering if it's going to be more expensive in 2022 than it is today. Because we're talking about 2022, this price, considering that a city hall is added in. Considering that the library standalone in 18 was 17 million. So this sounds like not a bad deal if you can swallow it. But my question is, do we tie these two together? Are they, and this is, I don't know whether this is a Mr. Stowe's question, maybe it's a Russ question. We tie these together, is it all or nothing? That, that's my concern. What if we get funding such as the money that the legislature passed forward to Snow Isle libraries? And we get funding for that and then we can't seem to get it to happen for both of them. What, what happens next?
Well, you can help me with that. That does become the big question in this whole puzzle that as this slide shows, there's no decision yet on the funding strategy. What has been decided or at least talked about with the mayor is that we have to go out for some sort of a community levy on this project to fund it. And obviously to creatively finance it, you know, one entity may have to take the lead. Or it might have to be two separate bond issues. If it's two separate bond issues, that becomes more difficult. If one agency takes the lead, that presents different, different problems.
Right, I can see that.
So yeah, there's not a clear answer to your question yet, but that is going to be one of the next phases that we need to dig into.
Thank you.
And Councilmember, you did mention you had a question about escalation and there is escalation built in, at least on the prior slide that Russ had showed. I think there was a $21, there it is, yes, so potential annual escalation of $21. These are in $20, $21. And so depending upon when that instruction might occur, you can factor that in as well.
Okay, thank you.
This is Angie. I know when we first, or at least when I first joined the council, the initial conversation was around developing this building in this space using a public-private partnership. And now we're talking about bond financing and a levy. Can, can someone just sort of really quick, give me a summary about how and why we went from the public-private funding strategy to a levy strategy?
So I think we're still very much looking at this as a public-private development opportunity. The benefit, however, of that approach is limited in that we know that the property next door, which is owned by the library. If you were able to build on both the city, on the city hall lot, which is option or concept two. That's simply going to generate $900,000 for you. At least that's what we anticipate would come. Now you also have the utilizing the delivery approach, which we view as a public-private delivery method. Trying to mirror that more of the private sector than what you would normally do under traditional design bid build. And we think there's your, there lies your greatest savings in about $3 million from what typically governments do with, again, the traditional design bid build approach. But we looked at what opportunities there are for the private sector to come on, what the value of the land. That's typically what the incentive is and what you have to offer in that you own the building or own the land. Is that you can offer the land that's not necessary for the public facility as part of that public-private approach.
And the second half of your question about the financing. The public-private partnership always is dependent on bond financing in the background as the revenue stream to, to pay for the building over the, the period of time, the 30 years, the 20 years, whatever that is. And at this point, and I would encourage Barb to add any comments and we'll talk about this a little bit later. But the, the city doesn't have the revenue stream if we went out for a different type of bond, like a council manic bond. There's just not the revenue stream at this point for the annual payment on this. That's why it would be a bond financed, a levy financed debt through election.
Thank you. That's super helpful.
Okay, that's the slides I had for the different alternatives, the financing. And so really I just wanted to invite the council to have a conversation about your thoughts on these three alternatives. Before I share some of the community comments with you to date.
Russ, this is Gary speaking. Just if we could step back one question here. When we're talking about financing this project and as Mary indicated. You know, kind of an all or nothing approach could potentially, I guess doom this project in the sense that alternative one and two are obviously combined where that would kind of leave us to alternative three, where you have this separation. That if we did have two separate bonding items, you know, one may go forward, one may not. I just wondering how of this cost, how much on alternative three is attributed to the library? And how much is attributed to the city?
They're pretty evenly divided in that the square footage of both facilities are about the same. The library may be a little, take that back. I think the city hall actually may be a little larger, but they're very close.
So this hall is the two-story building, correct?
City hall would be a two-story building. So the approximate city hall size would be around, I want to say 18,000 square feet, a little less. And the library is in a range right now, you know, 14,000 to, you know, maybe 17,000.
Okay. Would that not lead one to believe that the footprint for the library would be more expensive than a two-story?
It would be more land consumptive for sure.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, just a comment, certainly two of the concepts work best under a single ballot measure. Not that you couldn't do two separate ballot measures for a joint project. It just becomes problematic with timing if one fails and one succeeds. If you have a single ballot measure, much easier, obviously, to do either concept one or alternative one or alternative two. Alternative three certainly is, is, it's the most flexibility in terms of how you finance. When each entity moves forward with the project, there is some sharing of parking in stormwater that would have to be pulled out. And then accommodated for if one of the agencies decides not to go forward on alternative three.
And I think if you're talking about terms of phasing a project, if there were two ballot measures, one was funded. Obviously, one of the agencies would have to take on the cost of that, that shared space and the utility infrastructure, HVAC. And all of that is an upfront cost. And so then there would have to be a plan for growth and cost recovery in the future.
This is Angie. I'll jump in and just talk about my preferences, being a part of some of the city focus groups. And being able to review this report. Thank you to all of you who helped put this together. It's really helpful to see this side by side. And just the details that were provided. I really dislike alternative two for a number of reasons. I don't, I don't like the wetland, the impacts on that compared to the other two. I feel like combining the two buildings in total adds some complexity, both in terms of funding and just day-to-day operations. I don't see the private development potential as being a benefit. I just feel like having another, having more construction on the same site after the site or during, you know, the development of the site. With, it seems like very little, you know, cost benefit in the end. I would rather, I would rather incorporate what's been talked about, you know, retail space or coffee or cafe space into one of the other alternatives versus having yet another piece of land to be offered for development. So I, there are things I like both about alternative one and alternative three. I feel like I could live with each of those, but I really dislike alternative two. I also feel like a three-story building is, is tricky in terms of accessibility. And so just want to make sure that we're considering access for all of our, all of our community members. So there's my two cents.
Great, thank you.
I think for me, the thing that jumps out most is the potential risk in how this project is ultimately funded. I, my concern is that we could inadvertently end up taking on a project where we have an obligation to take on more funding than, than we initially started off in conversation about this project. I do agree with Angie on the issues around accessibility for the third story, for a three-story building. I also feel like that potentially it artistically might lend itself to some really interesting design feature. If that were an option, recognizing that only increase costs. I also agree, I'm not sure that the private development potential is, is necessarily a huge driver unless that private development potential leads to some, leads to offsetting some of those initial development costs. I don't know downstream if there's really that value there. That being said, I kind of like alternative one in general. And I kind of see a, internally, I envision this, this natural flow from inorganic city space into a shared space. The naturally flowed into a library, which, which I think aesthetically could be an appealing facility. But, but I'm really concerned about the risk of how this project ultimately gets funded. Especially if it, if it results in increased burden and risk to the city.
Thank you. Mary?
Yeah, I so appreciate both what Sean and Angie had to say on this. I agree either alternative one or alternative three. One thing I have to tell you to comfort you, I hope, is that I was involved in both the library campaigns directly up front and center. And I can tell you the fact that we have a picture at all puts us way far ahead of where we were in 2018 and 17. There was never a visual. The other thing that encourages me is the fact that the Mr. Stowe has reached out to people. And the conversations that we've had across the city have been phenomenal. There's been a lot of engagement. And that is critical. I hope we can keep that up. We have a little time. We don't have to do this now. Hopefully, we will be on the other side of this pandemic. And we can actually sit down with people and talk to them face to face. But I do think there's a lot of pluses to keep in mind. And I agree, I think it's really important, what I'm seeing here that's really important to me is the less impact on the wetlands. And that is very important to me and that would put me at alternative one. I don't have a problem with alternative three. I kind of like that design also. But also cost, because I know that's what drives the people of Lake Stevens, like any other town, is how much is it going to cost me? And we don't want that to be the breaker. So I'm trying to be encouraged and I am encouraged, we're having this conversation. And I know we're going to go on and I can't wait to hear more about what people have been saying. Although I followed it closely, I'm not sure I'm up to date on everything. So stay strong, folks.
It would be, maybe this is already on the agenda. I would be really interested to hear, given that there was a lot of effort put into the community engagement and response. I'd love to hear what the community feedback led to.
Yeah, and we'll get to that a little later in the presentation. I just wanted council to have the opportunity to evaluate the alternatives themselves before, you know, looking at the, the community comments. And then that can be another set of criteria to consider.
Okay, thanks, Russ.
So I haven't heard from Councilmember Dotry yet.
Oh, well, all right. The only thing that I can see that really sways me one way or the other is the wetland sensitivity. The other parts of it are a wash for me. The cost is a wash because we're only talking a couple of million dollars. I realize that that sounds like a lot, but in today's dollars, that's not. So I think that the, that your slider bars are maybe a little bit confusing to that. When you look at the actual other slide that you had up there with the cost, I just don't think it, that matters that much. I like the fact that the cost of number three is much lower, is lower, not by much, but is lower. And the wetland sensitivity is certainly lower. I like the design. I think that the flow from like Sean, I think what Sean was talking about from the city to sharing it into the library. I think that flow would look really good. I think there's, I think there's some really cool things that could be done in that shared space. Sharing the partnership, you know, the, the agency partnership sharing, I think is a good thing. It's always a good thing to share partnerships with other entities like that. And it's good for the city to do that kind of thing. Because there's, there's going to be a lot of cost savings in that, in, in out years. In, in out years, I can actually see some cost savings coming up in out years when there's things that have to be changed on the site. I actually don't like number three that well. I would rather have this in a shared space. Number two doesn't really strike me very well either. I don't understand the access concerns with the three-story building. It's the same access concerns you have in a two-story building. Elevator is an elevator is an elevator. It doesn't matter how many floors there are. So I don't understand that concern. That's just me. Maybe I'm missing something. But I guess if I was to have my vote tonight, it would be, it'd be number one.
Councilmember Peter Shagan, did you have any other comments? I know you had some questions.
No, I just generally, I agree with all the comments that have been made. I guess my, as far as moving these projects forward, I think the alternative three, even though it's slightly increasing costs, would be more advantageous since the city's paying for one portion of the libraries paying for another. You may not. If they were lumped together, I just, I, I don't know, timing and so forth. I think obviously number three would give you, if one particular jurisdiction or agency wanted to move forward, the other one didn't, things of that sort. That's obviously the one that would make most sense. Other than that, I, I would like to hear the public comments.
Great. And this won't be the last time we discuss this, so Councilmember Tagent can add his voice when we bring this back at the next meeting.
Hey, Russ, a question for maybe you. Yeah, so really appreciate the comments that people have shared. Each of the council members has brought a thoughtful perspective. If you could go back to that last slide there. So in my simple mind, I look at, I'm hearing that alternative one is, you know, preferred alternative for wetland sensitivity and two is not. But I'm looking at these pictures. If we create a three-story building using the footprint from alternative one, we have the private potential option if we wanted that, the wetland mitigations. There's fewer impacts on the wetlands. And as far as a two versus three-story building, I don't see a difference between two or three-story building when someone's taken the elevator. I don't see how that would limit access. You know, as far as accessibility, but I'm wondering if there is a way to combine the benefits of two and one to, to do that. And, you know, I realize that, you know, a million dollars really isn't, is, you know, it's about 5% of the cost of the building. But I'm hearing from a lot of community members, you know, about the cost of things and taking on, you know, the cost of that. And so I know there are a lot of people that are very sensitive to, to that. And so I want to make sure that we're being as good a steward as we can with, with the resources that we have.
And absolutely. Sorry that I didn't call on you. You were off my screen as I was going down the list, so thanks for jumping in. The preferred option obviously will be a hybrid. It won't be any of these things that you, you see today. And so, yeah, picking the best. The alignment in alt two could absolutely be changed up to sort of a more north-south orientation. The change would be then, where do you put the parking? So I think if you made that shift, you would probably see a reduction in the open spaces shown. Your positive would be less wetland buffer impact and shifting the parking. Then you would lose some open space. So, yeah, absolutely. There's a, an opportunity to take the best of all of these.
And I'll throw in the mayor's two cents on this one. I'm a, I'm a contrarian on this one. I like alternative two. And the reason why I like alternative two is just that it's consolidates the buildings more. I think that there is some value in trying to lower costs with what would be the library's property to develop it out. And it's not only a $900,000 cost, but it's a long-term value in providing additional community space, whether that is some coffee shop or whatever might get put in there. But there's also a value in that community space as well as long-term revenues for the city, both in property values and possible sales tax revenue. So I like alternative two.
Well, I agree with your sentiment about that. However, we can't, we can't really tell anybody what's going to go in there.
Um, I think that we could create a development agreement and, and focus it.
Okay, but if we, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen that way, right? If, if somebody comes in and buys a property from us, they can basically build what they want, even if we want something else on there, unless they agree with our development agreement. And, you know, if they don't, can we actually stop them from doing what they want to do?
I think Russ would be smarter on that than I would.
So, yeah, absolutely. The development agreement would have to be with whoever the eventual purchaser is, where we would have mutual development goals. The, the market analysis has pointed towards multifamily as being the highest and best use for this site up to this point with the market draw from Frontier Village and everything. But the development agreement would be more of a secondary action with the purchaser not as part of this initial development plan.
Right. So I guess my question really is, and I wasn't very succinct. We come up with a development agreement and try to sell the property and they can't buy the property unless they agree to the, we don't sell the property unless they agree to the development agreement. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I, I had a little bit of a misconception there.
And that's Snow Isle's property, so that's another. So it's really their purchase and sale and how do we wrap all the partners together?
Right.
I'm going to move on to some of the community comments. We've gone through the cost approaches, some of the takeaways on, you know, the funding, the how. So I just wanted to walk you through what the community had to say. So we asked the question in the last public outreach, what is your opinion of alternative one? And so again, that's that shared one and you'll see the pie chart over here. And there's an arrow pointing to the highest response, which is like it. So, and then really like it was 78%. So that's actually fairly close between the like it and the really like it, 27 to 31. If you go to alternative two, this one had the least support in the community with 129 of the respondents saying they really don't like it. And then don't like it is the second highest at 80, so 44 and 27%. And this was kind of surprising. I'll say midway through the survey, we did a check-in and alternative one had been the preferred community alternative. At the end of the, the survey, the numbers had shifted towards alternative three being the preferred alternative with 162 respondents really liking it, 58 liking it. And you see the number of really liking it at 55%. And so then another set of questions were asked, which alternative do you like most? Obviously, we've already talked about that with alternative three being the, the preferred alternative, at least for the community. Which alternative do you like least becomes alternative two with 206 respondents out of 287 suggesting that alternative two is their least preferred. The last sets of slides. I just got the, the combined comments today. There's 44 pages worth of comments. So I just tried to capture a few of the sentiments that can be broken into shared space, separate space, financing, and then environmental type issues. So some of the common comments talked about efficient use of space under the shared space option, liking the idea of an activity hub. They liked some of the things that you'd suggested, that it's separate but connected. There were some questions about how do you provide security with the shared space? What does the shared parking look like? Some people thought there wasn't enough. Some people thought there was too much. The location of the building came up a few times. Should City Hall be oriented towards marketplace or 99 is under the shared space? The common entrance, is it confusing? One comment that was kind of interesting, you know, they liked the way they stated it, combine city business with library learning and fun. And then followed up by sort of, you know, the collaborativeness of having these different agencies together. On the flip side, some comments were saying too much in a small area. A lot of comments came in, they didn't like the three stories. Is that in the character of the neighborhood, other buildings that you see in Lake Stevens? Some of the comments about the separate spaces really focused on the library, that the library should be afforded the most unique character and respect as a civic, a broader civic use, that some people only come to City Hall, the sewer district offices for task-oriented reasons is what one respondent said. They talked about separation, maybe using landscaping. The library drop-off came up several times throughout the community comments. Comments about, do you want city administration and proximity to the library? How do you share the meeting spaces? Again, the accessibility question came up on several responses as it relates to a single-story library. But definitely, even if there were separate buildings, still a desire to see the shared open spaces. And then again, lower-profile buildings. Financing, obviously, that question came up multiple times. Specifically, who's the ultimate owner? A few of the respondents suggested that maybe the city should take the lead on the financing of the project and that the library would be a leasur to the city, just like Snow Isle would be. We've already talked about the, the financing of that. That would have some complications that we don't know the answers to yet. But people generally supported looking at low-cost options, creative financing. You know, what is the effect on community taxes? Several respondents referred back to the prior bond measures for the library and making sure that we've heard that voice and are we considering those past votes? Separate funding campaigns, we've talked about that. And then a mixed bag on not selling the, the property and making sure that there's adequate room for growth of this campus as needed and making sure that it's right-sized for a growing population. Environmental protection and equity issues came up on a lot of the comments. Protection of the, the wetland, wetland buffers, using the rain gardens, low-impact development, wanting to see native landscaping. Several comments came in about the glacial erratic there, that people would love to see that rock preserved and made an amenity to the site. Again, what is it going to do to traffic? Is there enough parking? Can it use solar energy? Again, back to some sort of low-impact development. How is it going to be sustainable? And then walkability for the community and bikeability to the site and accessibility. So again, that's just a broad overview of some of the community comments. I think what was more interesting that I'd wanted to share is just sort of the preferences. And so now you've sort of had your conversation, seen some of the community comments. And so I guess we can reopen it again. If you'd like to discuss more or just digest this next steps, we're going to be having a conversation with Snow Isle. They have not provided a preferred alternative at this point. And council would take a formal action at a later date that would set us on the path then to answering those questions of financing, what it looks like going to a ballot measure, et cetera. So again, I will open it back up to the, the mayor and council. If you'd like to provide any additional comments.
Russ, could you move the slide back to the three alternatives and the sort of comparison of cost and wetland impact? Thank you.
I'm not quite understanding the wetland impacts on three versus one. It's more impacts for three than one. Is that because we moved the library upwards and it's getting closer to the buffers in that area?
Yeah, so in alternative one, roughly the buffer line is somewhere in here. So you'd have this corner of the, can everyone see my cursor?
Yeah.
Okay, so the city building would be encroaching a bit into the buffer. And then most of the library and parking is outside of the buffer. In this alternative, you have a large stormwater feature. And alternative three extends into the buffer and then a corner of the library and parking extend into the buffer. So there is definitely more buffer.
The buffer is a dotted line there or the dashed line?
Yes.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you. So there's other costs associated with the mitigation of that, correct?
Yes.
But that's also in the cost estimate?
Yeah, that would be part of the hard costs for the site.
Right.
This is Gary speaking. I just, I understand the impacts of the wetland, but I think, Russ, maybe if you could elaborate on mitigation for and improvements to that wetland. My, my observation of that wetland is it's not the most attractive wetland I've ever seen. And I would think alternative three would give us the opportunity to enhance that wetland and make something as a positive rather than something that's just there.
Yes, all alternatives, there would have to be restoration and mitigation, bringing back in, you know, native plant communities, making sure there's water connection. So in all alternatives, that would happen, I think, as you suggest in alternative three, what you see now is really just a large lawn area, makes up the entire buffer. And then it drops off pretty quickly into that little ravine with a lot of blackberry and all of that. So, yeah, all of that would have to get cleaned up and revegetated.
I guess I'll go back to my original sort of comments and, and wanting to, you know, wanting to hear from the community. I think initially, when I saw the three alternatives side by side, I was, you know, I felt like there were pros and cons with both one and three. I am also really struck by the strong preference, not just the strong preference the community has, but there are really thoughtful reasons behind those comments. The, the number of people who took the time to participate in those and, and share, again, really educated, really thoughtful reasoning around their preferences. I do have to say that, given that feedback and given the, the time and effort that was put into not just soliciting those words and that information, but the time and effort the community took into, into putting that forth, it certainly weighs me towards alternative three over alternative one.
So Russ, I have a question. Something's been bothering, I think we've had this discussion before. And it has to do with wetlands. So we have a buffer area. We could replant it as Councilmember Peter Sagan has said, where we could mitigate it to make it look better. Would that, is that going to be, is that going to be an NGPA at that point? Or is there a way to have a walking trail through the wetlands where we could have some educational things going on in there, not too far into the, you know, not into the actual wetland area, but in the buffer? So that we could actually have some maybe educational opportunities for the wetlands. educational opportunities for the wetlands as maybe part of the library. You know, the library and the conservation district taking care of that kind of thing. It's always kind of bugged me that we have these wetlands that we can't totally use at all. I mean, even the ones downtown, we've been talking about trying to put a boardwalk through them so we can have some education and pathways through the ones downtown. It always is kind of bugged me that, you know, you just can't touch it. Well, you know, I just think that's ridiculous.
So the, and just so everyone's clear, the wetlands are primarily offsite. I don't have the exact boundary on this map. So what we're talking about is buffers. So the area outside of the actual critical area. And yeah, our code does allow some flexibility. All of these alternatives show walking paths within that wetland buffer. And they show some stormwater features within that buffer which our code does allow. So yeah, there is definitely the possibility and the desire and all of these alternatives to make the buffer areas innovative, but also an educational area that we could partner. Whether it's with the school district, the library, the conservation district to bring some focus on those areas.
Okay, is the, is the wetlands that are that are west of that area then? Is that, is that a 999 property?
It's a old drainage district property that goes down into that little stream and the it would become a native growth protection area on the site. And at some point when the city cleans up the ownership of that, the city would own that tract as well, at least the portions that were prior drainage district. And I think the private development to the west may have one of those properties as well or a portion of.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council member comments?
I guess for us, if we could, I mean, if there's an option to take in the feedback that you heard from the council and from the community members and you know, maybe consider, you know, some alternatives to the three alternatives that we have and then present those in a way that maybe we can incorporate as much of the feedback that's been shared to see if we can ultimately come up to something that's, you know, is going to meet our needs.
Absolutely.
Mary?
Yeah, I was just, I think Mr. Stowe has done some amazing photographs of potential paths. And I, from listening into what folks were saying, I think combining those with the library and City Hall is a wonderful educational tool. Absolutely. And I know that Mr. Stowe would be game to, his business would be game to make that happen. So I think that has huge potential. And I don't know, is that related to Stitch Creek? Does anybody know?
I don't believe so.
That water that goes, no, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so the next steps for me, as I said, I'm going to be having a conversation with Snow Isle tomorrow. And some of the design team that's been on this will bring it back to council at a later date. And the work will be to come up with a hybrid preferred alternative. Like I've heard pretty clearly from the council, some of your desires. So I guess going, going if there's a few more comments, otherwise I'll hand it back over to the mayor. All right, thank you, council.
President Dottre, I think we're on to capital priorities overview.
Yes, I believe we are. And I guess we'll have to go to Russ. We haven't heard from him in a while. So let's, let's talk with Russ.
Let me pull up in this next slideshow. Okay, does everybody see this screen now?
Yeah, before you get started, Russ, I'd like to point out to the council that we have a couple of people in the audience from the Youth Advisory Council, and I will continue to, to let you know that we have the youth of our, our community with us. And so the ones we have today are Anisa Yasser. She is, I believe, the vice president. And then we have, where do you go? Oh, did he drop off? He might have dropped off. Yeah, it looks like he might have dropped off. Okay, so we have Anisa's with us today. So just, just saying. Thank you.
So the goal of this presentation tonight that I'm going to tag team with directors Derpo and Stevens is just sort of our mid-year check in with you. Give you a status update on some of the projects that have been completed in the last year plus, some that are in the planning and development stage, and then some projects in the future that are unfunded. It just helps staff to prioritize the projects, especially the unfunded projects as we move into next year's budget cycle. So we'll all take some turns talking about these projects at any time. If you'd like some more detail on specific projects, please stop us and we'll highlight those a bit more. So this is just sort of the agenda as I talked about, the completed projects and then projects approved for construction specifically. We'll start off at the ones between 2020 and 2021. Just coming to fruition was the 20th Street widening that had been a project the city had had on the books. Going back at least a decade and the county had it on their books for a decade before that. So we finally got to the widening of that project and the financing came from different sources, including grants and local, local funds. Companion project was the mobility lane. And that was a project that came in with some grant funding and that's created this new morning HOV lane on 20th Street. This is the, the big project that the city is continuing to work with Washdod on, which is the SR9 and South Lake Stevens Road intersection. It's currently planned as a roundabout. We've been able to get capital state grant that's gone towards the design of this project. We have another million dollars from a state grant that would go towards the culvert replacement. And it is currently in design phase nearing completion. With the construction date probably needs, you know, the construction date would still be accurate going into next year. And this project would be bond financed with a $10 million dollar bond approximately that the city is working on. Eric, do you want to provide any additional comments on this project to date?
I know it's moving forward. Like Russ said, it's part of the overall Costco project, but we wanted to point it out specifically. This intersection because it is a big part of it and it does have a pretty hefty price tag. But it is on schedule. And part of the overall bond for the rest of the improvements with Costco.
A related project is the 91st Avenue extension. So that project was about a $5 million project. Funding has come from our traffic impact fees, from some bond financing. It's well underway on the construction as you can see from this photo. And I believe it's going to have a shutdown for, is it a fall shutdown?
It is a summertime shutdown and the water main work can commence in September. Be paved and done by mid-October.
And so this project does also include the waterline replacements for the City of Everett's waterline to allow us to do that crossing.
Yeah, the picture is really cool right there. You can see the three Everett Water Transmission Mains. If you look down there in those trench boxes. That's the two, three and number four line that you're seeing down there that they need to replace. So they've about done all the work they can do. The next step is to replace those water mains and you know, they can't do it during the peak demand season, which is summer.
Are you? Those trench boxes, that's not the extent of the pipeline replacement, is it?
Yeah, that's the tie-in points. Yeah, that's the downhill tie-in point. They'll, they'll start 45-ing up right there at those points. Then they'll plane out across the road and tie back in on the uphill side.
So what's the linear footage of the pipeline that's being replaced?
About 160 feet of each.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
So the next project, we wanted to highlight a facilities project was the police station. There had been a $9 million bond for the purchase and remodel of that facility. And it's substantially complete, a few little things to button up, but the police department is in their new home happily. Some of the other facilities projects, the decant facility has just opened up. It is substantially complete as well. And then the public workshop is under construction, being framed, had a budget of 1.4 million. And the funds for that project came from a variety of sources, including some of the utility funds and general fund. And it is on target to open up in the summer of 21. So we have a few stormwater projects moving forward. You've seen some of the early action over last winter where we did some emergency clear out of some vegetation that had been clogging the downfall channel. The next phase is to do the formal dredging and then to replace the weir the following year. Combined, those projects are going to be about 1.8 million dollars. Eric, did you want to add anything to the stormwater projects?
Oh, no, you covered it, Russ. There's in the outfall cleaning that we're doing the permits for this year. It's not the whole channel. When we surveyed the bottom of the channel, we actually surveyed three different high spots, if you will. And so it's not as invasive as going in and digging out that whole channel from the lake down to Catherine Creek. It's really some targeted areas, most, most of it all between the lake and Francisco's. Once it crosses 20th, believe it or not, you got quite a bit of depth in that channel. We just have, have some high spots in there that I think will be relatively easy to get in there and reshape the bottom and re contour. I think when we did the latest calculations, it's only about 170 yards of material. When you calculate these high spots and what their removal would look like. So we're pretty excited about getting the permits in and get in there and doing that. The other part that Russ mentioned is, is replacing the weir, moving it closer to the lake and putting a some type of fish passable automated system in there. So with this North Cove Phase Two Park project, we did run all conduits down there, electrical and communication conduits to be able to hook that to some kind of SCADA system with the other stormwater monitoring we do that we can control that remotely. So that, that would be the next phase of the project, probably summer fish window 2022.
The other project that came on the tails of the police station move was opening up the old police station. As you know, the Snow Isle library is going to move into that space. The city has gone through and done the structural repairs we needed to do for the foundation, doing some additional work on the parking lot, some of the landscaping. And the funds from that came from the police bond earlier this year for the restoration of that property. Also, the museum is going to be moved over to the old storage building temporarily until a new facility can be built. They're going to have a small office area and then their collection will go into storage on that site. Some of the parks projects that we've done, obviously you know about Frontier Heights substantially completed. There's a little bit of stormwater work that's being done and landscaping. And then there are future phases that are unfunded at this point. North Cove Phase Two is rapidly coming towards completion. Some of the remaining tasks are the turf, finishing up the landscaping and the parking lot. Looking to later this year, and council's talked about this at the retreat, is activating the 20th Street ball fields and creating this West Side Trail and locations for Dog Park in this area. We've had a little bit of community outreach, had some conversations with the park board. We currently have a contract for this project to do a design based on the preferred alternatives. And we've met on site with the engineer to look at the alignment for this project and it should be completed by the end of this summer or into the fall. Some of the other projects that we had talked about with council at retreat related to economic development, specifically moving forward with a market analysis for the 91st area. Snohomish County through Haskell and the Alliance for Affordable Housing has coordinated with this group, Urban Three, to do a project where they're doing a storyboard for the entire county and community, specifically looking at revenues and generating profiles for different areas. I've been in touch with this group about doing independent profiles for Lake Stevens and they would focus on four areas. 91st, downtown, the southeast annexation area, and then at the Hartford, Machias area. And the proposed funding for this would come out of the new federal care stimulus. The rescue plan, we're still waiting on the specific criteria for allowed uses, but we're hoping that that would be the funding source. Otherwise, these would be unfunded projects. So now looking forward to projects that we would move into in 2022. Before I do that, I'll take a pause just to make sure there's no questions from the council on these projects that are completed or will be going to construction shortly. Okay, so as we look out to the future, we've received grant funding through state capital grant to do Phase two and a portion of Phase Three of the South Lake Stevens Trail. We do have active requests out to our federal delegation for earmarks. And this project has moved forward on their list. We're not approved for additional funding, but it has moved forward. So breaking this up into two additional phases, you see the cost estimate for Phase Two, about 2 million. Phase Three is 3 million. And that would give us a link from Highway Nine up to Machias Cut Off and then to the edge of the city limits going to the east. Main Street, this project's estimated at about 8 million dollars. We have about 2 and a half million dollars from PSRC through a grant, state grant of a million dollars. This is another project that's being moved forward on the federal action. So hopefully we'll get up to another 2 million dollars for this project. Looking at developer contributions and then some local dollars to start design work in the coming year.
I might mention that includes the roundabout there you see in the picture at 20th there by the chicken. So that total cost includes Main Street and the new roundabout.
And this is one of the priority projects you'll all recall from our downtown subarea plan to rebuild Main Street. Okay, why don't you take this one away, Eric? I want to take a breath for a minute.
Sure, sounds good, Russ. Well, we're all awaiting an update here on what we call Mill Spur, North Cove Phase Three. The estimate for the roadwork is about two million dollars. We're hoping to be out to bid by May twelfth with a contractor, hopefully starting around the first part of July to get this wrapped up by the end of the year. So what you see there is, is tying into the north or the south end of the mill building, the big plaza. You have a two-lane street with angle parking on the north and some parallel spots on the south. It's a concrete street, no asphalt, curbless, storm drainage. You'll see down there on the lower left there, some parking along one twenty-third. And you can see where the Grim House will get located to down on the corner. So it gets flipped to one eighty and, and moved down there onto that lot. And then the next lot to the south would be the spot that we're earmarking for the new museum. And then you've got an out parcel there that we refer to as the parking lot that the city will work with this developer to develop a, a city parking lot slash joint use. And then the part that would be for sale is, is on the south side of the road there, the southeast corner. Things are moving, moving forward. As everybody knows, we got, got the row house moved. Working through that process, the asbestos testing company was at the Butler House. They moved Mr. Butler out over the weekend. So their asbestos testing, the Butler House today, they'll be in the library and the museum tomorrow. Super tight timeframe. Hopefully we can get the, if there is asbestos in the Butler House, we can get that abated before May thirty-first. So first of June, we can get in there, remove the Butler House, dig the hole for the Grim House. We do have a house mover under contract that will then scheduled for the second week of June, second, third week. He would come in, move the Grim House to its new location. We're working with Superior Concrete to pour the foundation. While that's getting poured, we would move forward with removing the museum and the library building. Then come back, backfill the Grim House, strip the whole site and be ready for a contractor to start first, second week of July. So everything's timed very tightly, but it's a great project. Excited to, to finally get to it and, and get it done. So. Anybody have any questions on the, the tight timeframe there? But it, it should all work. We got started early with the Row Club, which was my hope. Cause I knew that would, that would take a little while. So I was happy to get an early start on getting that moved so we can keep, keep the dominoes falling here this year. And Russ has a little conceptual there of what the new museum would look like. Currently probably ninety, ninety-five percent designed complete. But the construction cost, one to one point five million is, is another one of these unfunded projects that we have. So we'll have a design in hand. And the Grim House, you can kind of see it off to the right there. It'll be down on that corner lot. That'll be complete. We're still trying to secure funding for the new museum, and I know they're working on fundraisers and hoping to contribute to. I don't know where that's at, but definitely on our list to figure out how to fund that project. Obviously it's not going to happen in twenty twenty-one, but we're really hoping twenty twenty-two would, would be the year that we could build this museum.
Okay. Any questions on the museum or the Mill Spur? Then we'll move back to some park projects.
Mary?
Cue. Um, yes. So I'm looking at the museum. Is it facing the lake or is it facing the Veterans Memorial?
Facing the Veterans Memorial.
That's what I thought. Yeah, that's what I was expecting, but something you said had me confused. Okay, good. That's what I understood. Okay.
Yeah, it faces the new festival street as well as the Grim House.
Great. Yes, I know. I know where the Grim House goes, but somehow from what you said, I thought it was going to then be behind the Grim House, but no, it's beside it. Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, Sean.
I'm just, Eric, thank you for walking us through, uh, through, through this project in particular with the timeline being as tight as it is. Have there been any, any conversations around contingencies, particularly around the concept of there needing to be a significant abatement? In the, the Butler House, I believe it was?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think we got a little contingency built in there. I don't think the abatement will be too bad. But I, I think it fits with the timeframe. We, we do have to bear in mind, they've been great to work with. And so we've been in contact with Matt Dinger Daly here the last week and the sooner we can get in there and, and start that abatement, the better. But we actually don't take possession till May thirty-first. So we had that conversation today. Well, if it took them all the way till May thirty-first before I could get in there, June first and do the abatement, what's that due to the schedule? So it's good you, you picked up on that council member Frederick, because that is definitely a concern of mine and, and how it fits in that window.
I'm, I'm, I am a little familiar with abatement. It, it, it gets tricky at times. So just, just a little concern, it's, it's a really tight window. I'm sure you've worked through all of those things. It's just definitely something that I would certainly welcome hearing how it's going from time to time and, and you don't have to do anything extra. That's, that's really my interest and my responsibility to check in with you and, and see how that's going. So thank you.
We'll keep you updated. I think all the council updated on this project downtown. It's going to be, out of everything we've done, this is probably going to be the biggest change. As you know, we know, we got in there early, took as many trees out as, as we could. You know, trying to do as much stuff as we can in preparation for this. So it doesn't all just hit right in first part of June. So you know, if I can get in and start stripping some of the asphalt and curbs and some of the other things we need to deal with. That, that first part of June, I'll definitely get in there every chance I get to start working on it.
I'm going to move on to some park projects now. And you'll see through all of these slides that we've tried to show you where the funding is coming from. You'll see that we've been pretty successful getting some grant funding on all of these projects, but we still have some, some shortfalls. So again, as we talk about priorities, that's just something to, to keep in mind. Eagle Ridge, this has been a project that's had a master plan for a long time. Over the last few years, we've been able to do a little bit of work out there, build the community gardens and the first phase of the parking lot. We do have grant funding coming at almost a half a million dollars. And the city would do an add-on to that, you know, about a hundred thousand from park mitigation fees that hasn't been obligated yet. And we're hoping on a potential second grant for that site that would allow the build out. There still may, might be a shortfall. The cost estimates, you know, between a million and a million and a half dollars. So if we don't have the initial or all of the funds, we'll have to streamline the project or phase it into additional phases. This is a new project that we would like to look to construct. We've been working pretty closely with a local mountain bike organization. They'd really like to do a project in Lake Stevens where they would do some cost sharing with us. And the Centennial Woods site is the one that we've all sort of agreed on. That would be the best site for this pump track with maybe some mountain bike runs. It's adjacent to Centennial Trail. We've also talked earlier in the year about a location for a climbing wall. This also seems to be a natural location for that, to have some of these more intense outdoor activities. We also talked recently about the potential to acquire some of the Puget Sound Energy parcels and tie them into this to expand that area. So next year, we hope to get going on a little bit of pre-design for this project. But obviously the construction is unfunded and will have to be one of the competing projects for park mitigation dollars if no additional grants are available. Another few park projects, obviously some funded, some not. There's the North Cove Boat Slips. That project is funded. Davies Beach Restoration, that'll be happening this year. Funded, an opportunity came up though with the Cedarwood Clubhouse. So Cedarwood is a development off of ninety-ninth tucked back in a little bit. And they have an old community clubhouse. It's been boarded up for quite a while, had a lot of graffiti and vandalism. Earlier this year, the mayor and council member Peter Chagin actually did some volunteer work and painted over the graffiti on the site. And when they were out there and talking to the HOA, they asked, would the city like to take on this property? And it's a pretty cool property that it's this two-story building. There's built-in parking, some open space. And through our discussions, we said, you know, rather than demo this and do a pocket park, this is an amenity that we can't reproduce for the value of what a restoration would cost on this property. So if the council's interested, this is something we would pursue to bring into our parks inventory and really looking at it as an opportunity for a rec center, maybe growth for our parks division in the future. And definitely look for partnership, whether it's with the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA or some other group that could manage this as a rec facility or a teen facility and sort of the central part of the city. Any questions on some of the park proposals before I, I move on?
Yes, Russ, Gary speaking. How soon could we possibly accept the donation from the Cedarwood HOA on that property?
That's something we could get going on anytime.
I would encourage that we do that.
Mary?
Yeah, um, first of all, good job, guys. Excellent job, Mayor. And Mr. Peter is taking way to go. I was really thrilled to hear that. But where exactly is Cedarwood Clubhouse?
So I, I don't off the top of my, off the top of my head, but there is just off of ninety-ninth, there is, it's an older development. It has some multifamily. It has some single family. So it's just due east of ninety-nine.
Right off of Fifth Place.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. I know right where that is. Okay, great. I'm going to go check it out. Good job. Excellent.
This is Angie. Just want to echo, I, I would love to see us move quickly on this property. I think it has tremendous potential for this neighborhood and super excited that we have the opportunity to help develop something useful and great. Thanks.
Any other thoughts or should I move on to the next suite of projects?
You move on.
Go ahead and move on, Russ.
Okay, so these are the projects beyond twenty twenty-two, either under pre-design or some under design. So this is sort of a list of road and storm projects, and I'll let Eric walk you through this slide.
Okay. A couple important ones on here. Obviously we got this sixteenth street northeast trail connector, which is taking the ten-foot trail, hooking it to Main Street. You know, sixteen Boys and Girls Club, taking it as far as we can to try and make that loop down the Centennial Trail. The thirty-sixth Street Bridge, obviously over Catherine Creek. Bridge that's wood structure failing, has some weight limits on it currently. We had money in the budget for, to get us to a thirty percent design. We've done all the stormwater modeling, all the complicated stuff, came up with a preferred option. Now it's just a matter of trying to find some funding upwards of five, six million dollars to replace that bridge. But at least we'll have a design. We get a lot of the environmental stuff going and underway. Hundred and seventeenth, this is one that I really need to shout out for here. It's one that we've been working with the residents in the area for two years now. Goes from twentieth northeast north to make that connection up to the high school. Estimates about one point six million. We haven't ranked out in two different grants, Safe Routes to School and another state safety grant that we've applied for funding. Haven't made the cut on either one of those. There's actually nine parcels that we need to obtain right away from, and that's what I'm working on this year. I've got five tied up to date. And, and the other four, it's just a matter, I think of, of getting them the paperwork and, and working out the deal. We really need to figure out how to fund this sidewalk project. We're purchasing the right of way. We've talked about this connection and what's, what's kind of cool about it is from the high school now with, with the timbers development, we've got a sidewalk that we worked really hard with the developer on the timbers to get all the way down Oak Road to make that connection, all the way down Calo Road to get to Lundine and the park. And this section on one seventeenth would make that whole route continuous from the high school down one seventeenth to twentieth and get folks down to North Cove Park. So this is really, we talk about sidewalk connectivity. This is just one small piece of that huge route that you could literally walk this sidewalk all the way from downtown Lake Stevens up around the high school and all the way to Lundine Park. So that, that's really important. Grace and I have been working on it for a couple of years, trying to get it funded and we just haven't. Obviously we've got this covert on Catherine Creek that's on Hartford, which you're seeing the two point eight million currently sound salmons working on that with us. Then we've got a couple downtown coverts. When we talk about our main street, you have the one down by the Boys and Girls Club. And then another one that we need to look at upgrading that goes under twentieth, where we have all the, the flooding when we, you know, before we clean the outfall channel by the apartments there. Then we've talked about this additional neighborhood park in, in the southeast end of town. That's unfunded and a Seattle City Light open space near Vernon was another thing that we'd been working on. And obviously what we talked about tonight, the Chapel Hill Campus, which is also unfunded. So like Russ mentioned, we've got a lot of competing priorities here. It'd be nice to get some direction. You know, this is kind of a two to three-year look ahead of what the city has on its radar screen. So it's really great to get it in front of y'all tonight.
Any comments from the council on this slide? Otherwise we're going to turn to talking about the southeast annexation area.
What, Eric, Gary speaking, what are you looking for direction tonight or is this the absorption time?
Just absorption time.
Okay, great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Frederick?
One, one really quick question specific to the thirty-sixth Street Bridge. Recognizing you've got thirty percent design, you've done all the environmentals and you're looking for funding to move forward. How, is there a shelf life on that, on those environmental surveys? And that environmental work that, that needs to be done?
Well, we don't.
Five years.
Yeah, I may misspoke a little bit. We don't have permits in hand.
Okay.
We've done all the necessary, necessary modeling and a lot of the other stuff that goes with it, the, the critical area survey, the WDFW modeling. But once we get the permits, it's got a shelf life, like Russ says, of about five years.
Okay.
We, we've done enough to be able to move forward and seriously look at some federal bridge grants. One of the things that we are working on is getting it reclassified. Cause right now that's not a federally functional classed road, thirty-six isn't. So it would fall totally on city dollars to make any repairs. It wouldn't qualify for PSRC or, or other funding that's out there. So Grace and I are working on getting that reclassified into a major collector. So it would rank out on some of these other funding options. We recently did the, did the same thing. If you recall, we reclassified the new ninety-first and twenty- We recently did the, did the same thing. If you recall, we reclassified the new 91st and 24th. And so by doing that, we were able to get that additional TIB grant for $3 million to help with that project. So if you're on top of the game and you're looking ahead at, at what you need, because it takes a year, year and a half to reclassify a road. It takes federal approval and Washdaw approval. So we're, we're definitely looking ahead, making sure it's classed right. So we are competitive for some grants.
So if this gets reclassified under the federal standards, then this is the kind of project that historically city council would be lobbying for on trips to DC? Is, is that correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Especially as, as all the talks, we've talked about how it ties in with the, you know, industrial area, right? And this truck route and, and being able to get people in and out of, of the industrial area. So it's, it's an important corridor for sure.
And on our current federal asks, the two projects that did move forward are, I'll say the projects that are the, the most baked. We have South Lake Stevens Road where we have a, a bunch of success. We have the pre-design. So we have a really good story to tell 20th Street. We have 20th Street, Main Street intersection and continuation. We have the pre-design. We have the matching dollars. So both of those two projects are seen as the most successful. Whereas this project, we don't have any outside funding match, only 30% design. So it's a riskier project, I think, at, at this point. So.
All right, well, I'm gonna be looking forward to hearing this has been reclassified so we can get to work.
All right, I'm gonna move on. So we wanted to give a little bit of a highlight to the southeast annexation area. I'm sure all of you have heard that the, the county council did approve the ILA. County Exec Summers has already signed that. So that will be back in your court in a week to take a revised action on. As we look at that, we have identified a few projects going back earlier this year where we wanted to do some upgrades to Sunset Park. If any of you have been out there, you'll see that there's, you know, large tree stumps that need to be ground out. Some of the bank is sloughing away. The dock needs repair. The parking lot needs repair. So we'd really like to put a focus on this project as a priority after the, the annexation moves forward. The county has given us a small grant to contribute to that work. During the annexation process, the public work staff, they've gone through this area. They've started an inventory of storm drainage, sidewalk conditions. I believe it's going to be put on our pavement preservation plan moving into the next year. The next step is for us to really identify any capital projects that need to be done. So this would be looking at intersections and levels of surface, levels of service, making sure everything out there is functioning correctly. And do we need to make any major improvements? To date, there are no capital improvements planned in the county's plan for this. So that is something we want to continue to look towards. And as I mentioned earlier, we would also do a targeted market analysis for this area. So we can understand this area a little bit better when it comes into the city. And as we look to our South Lake Stevens path, as we complete those next two segments, the next logical segment would be in this corridor, whether it's going north from the 18th Machias or south from Purple Pennant area, we'll have to look at those sections. But that would also be a logical extension of that project. With that said, I've also heard from a couple of council members that they would like some information on the, the general communication strategy moving forward for this area. So what I can share with you is upon every annexation, we do send a welcome to the city packet. The same would be true of this area where we would let the new community members know about the resources in the community, who your elected officials are, what boards and commissions you're available to have, numbers for garbage sewer district, city hall, planning administration. So that's a standard practice. We have maintained a website for this area. We will continue to do that. We would like to share with the community some of these ideas about future improvements, the inventory of resources out there. So those are some of the initial thoughts. And again, I would open it up to the council if you wanted to share any additional thoughts on this. Okay, let me scroll through.
I, I guess I'll jump in here and would encourage the council to last, this annexation as well as the previous one have not been a smooth path for the city. And I would encourage that we have some dialogue as to how best welcome these folks to the city of Lake Stevens. And hopefully we can mend some bridges. So I don't know what those avenues are, but I think we're off to a good start as far as highlighting some of the improvements that are coming their direction. Again, I would hope that we could have some dialogue and strategize a little bit so that we can communicate appropriately to these new residents and welcome them to the city.
I think that's a great idea, Gary. I, I do wonder, even if we could just start by having some sort of a, you know, welcome to the city Zoom meeting where people could ask questions and there could be folks available, some sort of like a, almost like a town hall, you know, get to know your city staff opportunity. I just, I totally agree. I think that, that mending, mending relationships is important. And, you know, continuing to work towards one city around the lake means that, you know, we reach out to our neighbor and, and welcome them and, and are available to listen to their questions and ideas. So I'm happy to help make that happen in whatever way makes sense.
Awesome. That's great. I appreciate it. I don't, Mr. Mayor, I don't, yeah, just kind of thinking here with Angie's thought process and so forth. Maybe it'd be appropriate to appoint a couple of council members to kind of start this dialogue or at least, you know, put their arms to Brown. I'm not volunteering, but.
Yeah, you are.
But just to maybe kind of push this forward a little bit so that, and maybe there's a couple of council members that want to join in on this and, and kind of step forward on this.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's something we can work on. If, if any of the council members want to work on this, just shoot me an email or text message and let me know. And we, we can tie them up with staff and figure out a path forward on it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I will mention Russ touched on it just briefly, but if you recall, last year we had an extra $100,000 we put in the street budget to perform a new pavement condition rating survey. Grace and I got the paperwork all done on that. They're on contract to do that work. I think it's the second week of June. And we did make a minor change to include this southeast area to make sure that we got a, a good scan and knew the condition of the roads. We also included the sidewalk scan. That's going to be really beneficial for the whole town. So be on the lookout. First part of June, you'll see their trucks going over every road in town. Then they got a little, little remote rover that does all the sidewalks that they need to be actually right above the sidewalk to collect that data. It'll give us condition of sidewalks and where we're missing things and ADA ramps. The, the problem is they take so much data when they're out there. It actually takes them like a month and a half, two months to process all the data and to bring it into a workable format. So I'm hoping to be able to bring this back when we get into September, when we start talking budget next year and, and circle back around on the TBD discussion. This is kind of the data we've been really pushing hard to get. So thank you for giving us the $100,000 to make this happen this year and it's scheduled. And we'll look forward to getting the data. It comes with software that has some really cool budgeting tools and some projection software that I think is going to be an eye opener for all of us once we get the data. So. But we did include this area, so.
Russ, one quick question. When do you anticipate sending out this packet of information that you talked about to the rest, to the new future residents?
So a, a couple of things have to happen first. We'll be bringing the annexation back to the city council at your next meeting to revise your authorization to sign the, the date that it becomes effective changes into July now rather than the May date. So that would happen immediately on the heels of that. We would send it to the boundary review board for their review and comment. So anytime during that boundary review board process, we can start engaging that, that community.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
The boundary review board has it for 45 days. Is that correct?
That is correct. Okay, I'm gonna move on then. I won't spend any time on the civic campus slide, but I did want to just bring it back because this is one of the biggest decisions the council will have to, to make as we move into the, the future. And so again, just the next steps for us is to have that coordination with Snowy. Bring back to the council a preferred or a hybrid alternative and then starting to work on a, a campaign to bring that to a ballot vote in the future. And with that, I am going to hand it off to Barb and she can talk about where we are with our dollars and cents and what we have looking into future years.
Thank you, Russ. I'm not going to drag this out too long. I just wanted to touch on a few of the funding sources that have been mentioned throughout the slideshow. I want to say that Public Works in Planning and Parks have done a great job getting us grants this year and with the support of the mayor and Jean and Outcomes by Levy, Doug Levy and council support on this. So we've done a great job getting grants. And some of the other sources of funding that we've been using that have been talked about are the TIZ funds, the traffic mitigation funds. We're estimating to have about $2.6 million left at year end 2021. If development continues occurring as we have anticipated and estimated and all the projects come in at budget. So again, those are split into three separate traffic impact fee zones and that is where that money can be spent. So reminder that TIZ one, that is our, our north downtown type area. Our TIZ two, that is up sort of the northwest side. And then TIZ three, that was the area annexed in 2010. And the most recently, not the most recent annexation that hasn't gone through yet, but the most recent annexation that kind of juts out to the east side. So those are included in the TIZ three area as well. So those can only be spent in those areas. That's where the money is used. So the park mitigation that can be used citywide, it can be used for purchases of park property and increasing part. We've, we've spent a lot of money in the past few years. Starting in 2018, we've spent over $2 million or really close to $2 million each year, which is why it's actually decreased our fund balance to about $633,000. We do, like I said, have funding for all of our currently budgeted projects. But again, our future funding is highly dependent on development and what's going to continue in the city. And as the development slows down, we're going to have to really prioritize our projects. I know there's a lot of parks that we need to, park areas we need to purchase and build out. And we need to continue getting the grants and that sort of thing here. So. I did want to mention that we have spent about two points. So I know we're having, it's kind of a, we spent about $2.6 million in traffic impact fees. $2.2 million in traffic impact fees in 2020. So we've been spending a lot of money doing a lot of projects and that was park impact fees. We spent the two points, we spent 2.2 in traffic mitigation, 2.6 and 2.2 in park mitigation, 2.6 in traffic mitigation. So we've been doing a lot with these funds and we're really utilizing them to back up or do local matches for grants. And so we've been doing a really good job on that. The next one is looking at our REIT. This is another major funding source. REIT one is more, is less restrictive than REIT two. REIT two, we can't use on park purchases or any type of civic project. We're paying for most of our bonds, our bond debt with the REIT one and REIT two funds. REIT one is paying for all of our previous bonds as well as our new police department bond. And then our REIT two will be paying for our new infrastructure bond that we'll be getting. That, by the way, our, we got our pricing set today for our most recent bond, looking really good. We should be getting those fund, that funding on the 18th of May for the infrastructure project. So really good news on that. So anyway, so we'll be spending that, paying for that out of the REIT two. So again, everything that we have in the budget, we are budgeted for based on our projections. We're definitely going to have to start prioritizing. As, as Eric had said, a lot of these projects are really important. 117th sidewalk, he had said it's been on there for a couple of years. It, it has, it's been a priority. We just haven't gotten there. So we're going to have to take a, a closer look and see what kind of grants we can get and where we want to stretch this money to. Other than that, our, I'll give you a quick preview. Our, our revenues are coming in really good this year so far. So I'll be doing a first quarter update for you guys next week and so far, so good. We are at or above what we had anticipated being when we were doing the budget. So just a quick yay after saying prioritize. We don't have any money. So.
So just, I guess to, to wrap up, I know this was a lot of information we've thrown at you, the last presentation, this one as well. Just if there's any final comments from the, the council tonight, you know, we'd love to, to hear those. Otherwise, I think as was said, is this just an absorption night? That's fine too. And we'll definitely bring all of these things back to you in, in time.
Okay, thank you, Russ and Barb and Eric for giving us all this information. It is a lot to munch on, that's for sure. I guess we will, is there any other further questions on any of those topics from the rest of the council or the mayor? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to the Diversity Commission. This is a council discussion on the DEIA Commission. Every, did everybody receive the email from Kelly that show, I think it was from Kelly that showed the commission versus the advisory board? Discussion that the mayor had with, the mayor and several of his council members have had with the the Citizen for BIPOC group.
Councilmember Dottie, I think it was from Jessica.
Oh, Jessica sent it. Okay, thank you, Jessica. I appreciate that. Jessica's with us tonight as a, in the, in the audience.
Hey, hey, Council President Dottie.
Yeah.
So just let you, let you all know. So I've been meeting with Jessica Waddam and a couple of the other ladies who are on the Alice for BIPOC group committee. We've met twice last couple of weeks, just discussing about what is the path forward that they would like to see and like to see. We, we've come down to, do we create a diversity advisory board or do we create a diversity commission? I, in our last discussion, they provided this document that I had Ms. Waddam sent to everybody. Everybody that they put together has seen pros and cons of either one. And so that's where we're at here tonight is to have a discussion over where the, where the council would like to. where the, where the council would like to see this go. And, and I could add my two cents as well.
Okay, well, we're open for discussion.
If I may.
I think we'll start with Mary.
Okay. Great. So I see huge potential in a commission because I see a way that we can make Lake Stevens even more vibrant than it already is. I came from a community that had everything from Fiesta in September to a black theater festival to, and we didn't have a lot of indigenous people, but I totally see potential for some kind of a celebration of that group of folks. And I know that there are many people from other countries and other places and other cultures who would probably love to have us celebrate that they live here in Lake Stevens. And I just think it would, it would be awesome if we had a commission that would drive these kinds of things. I wish I could be on it, but I know I'm on city councils, I can't. But I would certainly support a commission. I think it says there is a lot of work that goes with it for our city staff who are amazing. They are doing so much already. And this does put another burden on them. I recognize that. But of all the city staff I've met, I believe they would be okay with that. I hope I'm right. But I have never seen anybody on our city staff who isn't open to making Lake Stevens shine. And I just see this as a huge opportunity for us. That's all I got to say.
So far, Mary, anybody else? Angie, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daughtry. You know, I, I, since we've started this conversation, I realize it's been happening kind of off and on for the last year and a half or so. I, I tend to, you know, listen to workshops and, and council meetings and think about how, if we had a DINA commission, how would that be impacting the decisions we're making and the work that we're doing? And just tonight, talking about you know, access issues to the library and the new civic center, talking about so many of the parks conversations that we're having. Information or, or a conversation about playgrounds and, and ways to make them more accessible. I just think that there, that an expert commission, a commission of experts of which none of us are in the areas of equity and inclusion and diversity could help inform us in ways that I think we don't even realize. And so I, I, you know, I, it's no secret. I have spoke about a commission for a while now. I definitely look forward to the opportunities that that type of guidance and information could bring to the council as we make these decisions. And I think that the BIPOC, Allies for BIPOC group has just done an amazing job helping to educate us and enlighten us. And this document comparing the two is super helpful as well. So I am on board to move forward with the commission and just look forward to hearing from everyone else and talking about what the next steps might look like.
Angie, could you clarify something for me so I can better understand this? How would a commission or an advisory board improve access to a library or parks?
Yeah, I mean, like, I guess, going back to, I'm not an expert. So this is my, my understanding in, in conversations that we've had. I think what what the role of a commission in this, in this way could do is in, is sort of enlighten us in ways that we aren't enlightened. So help bring us a perspective of access for non-English speakers, for example, or someone with a mobility disability or the folks in our community who, who right now struggle with access. I guess I see a commission being able to tap into those folks and bring those voices to the council in ways that those individuals can't directly communicate with us. Does that answer make sense?
I, I mean, there is the American Disabilities Act that requires all of our public facilities to accommodate people with disabilities. So that would be included in library design. Parks are the same issue. You know, parks are open to all. We certainly make provisions for handicap ramps, things of that sort. So people can access. So I'm just, I don't, I don't understand. Maybe I'm ignorant, but I don't understand the access issue.
I think that, yeah, I appreciate your, your willingness to, to ask those questions. My understanding and, and the way I see it is that absolutely we fall under these federal defined guidelines and in creating spaces. But that doesn't necessarily bring forth the voices of individuals in our community who may still have barriers. And I guess I, I think we do a great job following those state and federal guidelines. But I want to know if we're still, if there are still people in our community, not only that are, have barriers to access, but ideas from a group of experts and expert commission that could help us mitigate those issues for our community.
I'm still scratching my head as to how a commission could facilitate that versus the citizen engaging with the city and saying, you know, X, Y, Z, we've got. I get for access, I just, I don't, again, I plead ignorance. I don't know how I how a commission, seems to me, it would be more of a commission of folks of physical challenges or language challenges rather than falling under a BIPOC commission.
Well, I think that's why it's not a BIPOC commission. It's a diversity, equity, inclusion and access commission. So it's, it's not just around, you know, discussing ideas and representing persons of color. It's also talking about, you know, representation for folks who be, who due to multiple factors and multiple areas, don't have current representation and don't have access to chatting with city staff and city council for, you know, for multiple reasons.
So do you foresee that we would be able to get some of these people that don't have that access, whatever that definition finally comes out to be? Because I think what we have is a definition, an operational definition problem here. Because I, I see the same thing as Gary is, it's, I think we have two different operational definitions of access. I'm not sure that I have been able to get my head wrapped around that yet. But do we see that some of these people that have these access issues are going to be on the commission then?
I think that would be, that would be hard, right? I mean, I think that there would be, I would hope, a concentrated effort to reach out to individuals throughout our community for whom this, not just to this commission to benefit, but who are, have expertise in these areas. And you know, so then does someone, is there someone that has expertise in the area of access because they themselves have struggled with access or because they've been a part of increasing access in other communities? You know, I don't, I guess I don't know. I'm, I would be curious, just like you, to see.
So this committee wouldn't be, I mean, as it's advertised, brown indigenous people of color, sounds a rather exclusive commission in my interpretation.
The BIPOC, the BIPOC group is bringing this forward because they've done the work in our community to define what a DEINA commission looks like. The DEI, and a commission is not a, is not limited to black and indigenous people of color. It is, it would be, I guess, what I envision is it would be a commission encouraging people with expertise and knowledge in the area of diversity, equity, inclusion and access to apply and go through the regular process of then, you know, seeding that commission based on that expertise and what different people are bringing you to the table.
Hey, Angie, I've got a question. Is, so are you feeling like they don't have access to the council right now? I, I'm just curious. Is it like, they're uncomfortable with access to the council or, and I just, I'm curious because I just, I feel like we've been very accessible, especially with everything that's been going on. I feel like we've been extremely accessible. Is there groups that we're not reaching? And that's what my question is. And I, I bring this out of the most fairest question in my mind, just curious.
Thank you, Marcus. I appreciate that. I guess to step back a bit, what I know about DEINA commissions in other cities is that they have explored access issues that the city didn't even realize were issues. And there was an expert, an expertise, a commission there to really spend time on and look into what those access barriers might be. So I'm not saying, I don't, I'm, again, I'm not the expert. I don't know what the access barriers are. I think that every city though, without someone that's looking at these, unwittingly creates barriers for folks. And to be, the, the, the first thing that comes to mind for me is an issue that happened last year, and I may not get all the details exact, but there was a decision made at the city level stop, I think it was to stop allowing cash payments perhaps. Or it was something about the, the bank of the Wells Fargo Bank and the, and a decision that, that changed the way that people could make payments to the city. And, and I think that I, I felt like that was a reasonable decision. And then I had conversations with folks and, and found that there, there's a fairly large population of people in poverty who don't utilize traditional banking systems and and all of a sudden didn't have a way to pay their obligations to the city because that decision was made. And I would have never thought of that. I'm sure the city would have never thought of that. That's one example of a decision that I just think in every, with every other commission, to have a group and a commission of experts just to help us look at some of the decisions we make from a different lens. I don't see how that doesn't benefit us.
I can see that. And thank you for, sorry about that. Thank you for bringing that one up because that gives me a little bit better understanding of what you mean by access now. So correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe it could be a language barrier also. Or actually, that's the only one I can come up with off the top of my head, but I think that the banking one that you just came, I never would have thought of that. I can see that as an access problem now. Now I think I'm getting my head wrapped around a little bit more of what you mean by access. So, and you know, I'm looking at, it's, you know, I don't know if anybody else wants to talk about that anymore, but looking a little bit further into this DEIA commission. And yeah, we are going to have to go out to the, to the citizenry and find people that are going to be wanting to be on the DEIA commission. I would look for, hopefully look for some of the BIPOC community to be involved in that so that we can get some of that flavor of the different cultures, et cetera, that have a different viewpoint of how they deal with the city. And, you know, like you said, Angie, we got to go through our process in order to do that. I also looking at what Jessica gave us. They're only looking to have maybe one of the people from their organization be on that committee. Which, you know, that's totally reasonable. They have to go through the same process as anybody else does. So what are the questions? What other discussion does the council want to have? Go ahead, Mary. Oh no, let's go with Steve. Mary, you had one chance.
Yes, I, I keep hearing this reference to experts, community experts and, you know, I, Kim and I have interviewed people for salary commission, for planning commission, for parks commission. Not a single individual professionally or otherwise is an expert or even advanced degree. I mean, we, we, one of the last people we had that we brought in the planning commission was an HR person for the city of Everett. That's not an expert in planning and development. And so when I think of equity and inclusion, you know, I think that instead of just having a group that's focused of upper middle class people of one gender. I think we have folks that are from, some are underserved communities, some you know, and I think putting it out and having a broad cross section of people that may not be experts in things. And so, you know, probably people that may be, you know, receiving some services from the, you know, volunteers of America or the food bank or some other people that would represent true diversity, you know, as far as a nice cross section of what we have in the community. So it would also have some divergent views. You know, it wouldn't just be all people of one persuasion, one mindset. And so I found that doing interviews, and Kim, you can probably vouch for this, that some people come into the interviews and we ask questions and they're, they're pointed questions. And sometimes people have one or two issues where they are focused and they want to point something in a particular direction. And, you know, having people that are open minded and inclusive of different viewpoints and things, I think to me would be important. You know, I'd, I'll just say, I had a great conversation, you know, I was, I was encouraged by Mayor Naring and appreciate the BIPOC people reaching out and inviting him to participate. And I really appreciated his thoughts on how effective their advisory committee has been for the city of Murraysville. And I think that's a great way for us to transition into that. You know, we dissolved the arts commission for lack of participants, a lack of people being a part of that. I'd hate to start something up with, with the BIPOC group. And/or the DEI a commission. And have it not get as much traction as we need because it's really focused on, you know, a group of people with you know, may, it may not be a broad cross section of what our city represents. So that's kind of a long winded deal there. I don't, I guess in summary, I don't envision a significant number of the people being experts that would apply for this. Imagine that some people may have any translators, you know, for, you know, to be able to access and participate. You know, if we are going to have people that, for whom, you know, that is a challenge. And so I think being mindful of that. And I want to thank Mayor Gailey for taking the time to meet and Mariner for taking the time to meet and listen to you know, the, the effort that's been put in. But I think this list here is a little, I wish it were a little more inclusive. I mean, it's, it's clear that what the BIPOC group wants to commission. And, you know, it's not necessarily a bad thing. But I think it's, it's certainly presented in a way that makes it look like that's the only way to go forward on that. And so I think maybe having a little more discussion, you know, maybe point by point if need be to, to review that. So, but I appreciate the time and the effort to put this together and to share those important viewpoints.
Steve, if I could, just really quick, when, when I use the word experts, I'm, I am talking about people with lived experience and people with expertise in that area. So not someone with a master's degree, not an educationist expert, but someone who has lived experience, living in poverty, someone who has lived experience working to, you know, with, with English as a second language. So that's when I use the term experts in this context, that's what I mean.
Okay. Cause when I, when I see expert, I think of a court expert, someone that's, you know, going to go testify in court as an expert witness. You know, someone who has that level of expertise and knowledge that's, you know, would, would pass the scrutiny of a prosecutor and a, and a defense attorney. I, I would like something like that, that actually is a representation. I mean, part of my heartburn with the BIPOC community, I know I is the whole, you know, the Facebook group is closed. You know, it's pretty exclusive. It's, it doesn't seem, you know, like it's inclusive and welcoming of different viewpoints. You know, I initially was invited to participate and then was, you know, excluded. And so, you know, if I'm going to be excluded as a council member, I wonder who else in the community, you know, I don't know if it's coming, I'm a council member. Is it because I'm, you know, I'm not sure why I wouldn't be, you know, able to participate in that. So I, I hope that that's not, you know, as an oversight, but maybe it wasn't.
Well, I appreciate the conversation over operational definitions because a lot of times, you know, we each have our own Well, I appreciate the conversation over operational definitions because a lot of times, you know, we each have our own definition, for instance, what an expert is. So I appreciate both of you coming in with your definition of an expert so that we all have a, maybe a, the same level playing field on what we're talking about. And I tend to agree with both of you, but Angie, I like, I like the fact that your expert is the people that are actually living and walking the walk. And that's the way I'm kind of thinking about the DEIA commission also is those people need to be the people that are actually I, you know, walking the walk instead of just talking the talk. So it would be great to be able to get people from all of those walks of life that are having difficulties, even language barriers and, and those kinds of things like, like Steve said, if we have to have an interpreter, then so be it. How do we, how do we accomplish that? That's, you know, that's, that's a bolt to the whole thing. But, well, so, you know, we have, you know, we have the Asian people that are having difficulties in the world right now. And we have, you know, we have kids. So the youth advisory council could be a portion, you know, a part of it. Maybe they have a seat on the commission. We have, you know, we have all kinds of differences of, in our, in our subcultures in our commission, in our community. And I think that as many as those that could be on the commission would be helpful. Go ahead, Mary, and then I'll have Sean.
Sean, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up. So I'm thinking of Sherwood Community Services. I'm thinking of some amazing people there. And I'm thinking of young friends I know who are mentally challenged. And I just can imagine somebody from that group educating us on how life might look and how we can know more. I don't pretend to know everything about every culture in the world. And I can just imagine there's, there's potential right here in Lake Stevens that we can apply. This is a wonderful conversation and I love hearing all of your comments. That's all I had to say. It is Sherwood Community Services.
Go ahead, Sean.
Thank you. So I, I don't, I, I don't, I don't question the value of, of of a commission or an advisory board in, in this, in, in this context. I, I think that there's a lot of value that comes from being able to marshal different perspectives in general, and that's certainly the focus of a diversity, equity, inclusion and access commission. My concern is really going to be, my, my concern is, is kind of, one, this commission would absolutely have to be set up for success from the beginning. And it really goes to process and how do you select those initial members and, and what do those, those formative meetings look like? And, and this is born straight out of, out of the challenge that, you know, Kim, Marcus, you know, we've, we've all experienced personally with, with the Veterans Commission, which is actually referenced in, in this, in the documents presented to us. You know, there's, and, and it speaks to even the challenge of all of those with shared experiences. Because of course, the Veterans Commission is, is very closely linked in the concept that, that we're kind of talking about here. Everyone on the Veterans Commission is part of that shared experience, either having been a service member or very closely tied to a service member. But even with that, there are lots of challenges in, in organizing a, a collective comprehensive direction to move forward with. And, and I, I think it really goes to the, of the first commissioners, they were put on the Veterans Commission, very few of those individuals still there and, and several of them left very quickly for a myriad of legitimate reasons, moving out of town, job promotions, life, life changes, all of those things, but they, they changed the momentum and it, once momentum is lost, it makes it very difficult to, to move those things forward. In, in fact, you know, the Veterans Commission is really only now really, really getting its feet under itself and, and really starting to produce some of those things that we kind of would have hoped to have had, you know, it easily in the 18 to 24 month, months prior to now. So, so that's, that's really a concern. And I, I, I realize that it's, it's certainly in most of the presentations tonight, we've talked about dollars in terms of, of, you know, anywhere from several hundred thousand to 24 million. But, but there are costs associated you know, with, with most of our commissions, the Veterans Commission and the Youth Council are different in that the Youth Council is independent of the city by their choice. And, and while they are welcome to come in and, and make public comment on topics of interest, there, there really isn't that funding issue for them, nor does that funding element exist for, for the Veterans Commission outside of the individual staff member that provides support. And that could be equal with, with the DEI and A commission, certainly. But I think it's really important that if we're going to move in this direction and we really look at what that process is going to be like in selecting those initial commissioners to make sure that that the people that are going to be there, one, is several people have stated are diverse and walking the walk is, is people with either that shared experience or that experience through other means. But we need to make sure that they're going to be able to, to be there to make sure that they're shepherding this process forward. And that's, though, that's, that's really the comment I would make. I could support both the commission or the advisory council. I, I kind of feel like there are advantages to the advisory council. But certainly not, not opposed to the commission direction either.
Councilmember Frederick, based on your experience with the Veterans Commission and how you just described that and so forth, would, would you think it would be better to maybe start out with an advisory committee to kind of go down this path, I guess, and maybe in reference to Angie's, the payment deal, that seems like an issue that a conversation could take, you know, place. It doesn't seem like it's a issue that would be elevated to a commission level. It would just seem to me a couple of, if it was brought to the attention of a couple of council members or even the mayor, it could be addressed in short order. So I'm just wondering, would maybe an advisory board be a first step to kind of get arms around, around putting in place something that would be functional?
Well, I, I think it really comes down to ultimately how, how we see that body intersecting with, with policy development. Ultimately, because that's, ultimately, that's what we're talking about. Where we're talking about a part of the feedback loop into policy decision-making. So, you know, often we have things that are on our agenda that, because they are business that rightfully fall in our agenda. And we find out because they're on our agenda that there's a lot of public interest. And we need to take a step back and get a lot more feedback on, on a particular topic. And that, that prevents that topic from slowing down. There are, in, in, in many cases, there is an opportunity to, to identify that a particular topic might require an equity lens, diversity, equity, inclusion lens from the onset. And in that case, it is helpful to have a commission as part of that process, much like you have a planning commission for that body of work. That's not to say that an advisory committee can't do that. I, I think that I think an advisory committee is a freer body to act independently. And I, I think with the youth council, you actually saw them kind of go through that process. They, they weighed these options themselves as, as a youth council and they came down to, we want to stay independent and they want to be able to kind of have the reins to, to look at topics on their schedule in their way. And, and I, I certainly support that. And I shared, and I, in, in meeting with the Allies for BIPOC, I did share those concerns. You know, between the differences and the freedoms of movement, if you will, indifference between a commission of the city and advisory committee that is not part of the city.
So I can, Gary, I can see your point a little bit, and maybe it's not your point, but a point to that is that, let's just take the, the banking thing, for instance. So we have a commission, the DEIA and A commission. And they're going to be looking at policies through the equity lens and, and that kind of thing. Okay, totally support that. That's great. But the problem then becomes that we need to, our staff needs to be able to figure out, okay, what do we need to send to these, to this committee? Or this commission to be able to give us that information? Do we send everything through them? Do we, you know, would this banking issue had, would that have gone to them? Would we have been attuned enough to do that? I, I, I know that that's kind of an ambiguous question, but you know, basically, the commission is going to be working to our work plan. You know, we're responsible for giving, the city is responsible for giving the work plan to the commission. And then we also have a liaison from the council on that commission so we can, you know, have a dialogue between the council and that commission. So it all works, but I'm, you know, I'm not sure that we're going to catch everything. I mean, we're still going to have those things. I mean, we, even the planning commission with, or the parks board, we've, we've messed up with them before, you know, or the salary commission, for instance.
I think that's
We didn't get our, you know, the council did not get the tenor of where we're going to that particular body. So we're still going to have those issues no matter what. So I don't, I don't really know. I think that either way it, it's going to work, but I don't, I don't have a problem with either way. I'm just like, I'm just like Sean, I, commission or like Marysville has the mayor's advisory council or advisory committee, they don't have a commission. So I don't know. I think it works either way. I, I realize that the Allies for BIPOC are pushing a commission, but they're not even going to be on it. You know, it's not, it's not that. They're just driving a commission based on their knowledge of what's, and their opinions of what's going on. I mean, that's not, I'm not trying to disparage that. I'm just giving facts. So I, I'm not adverse to having a commission. I think it's going to be a very steep learning curve to get one started. And we're going to have to be really, really careful on how we do the work plan, what we're looking for and get the right people in there.
Yeah. And that's exactly why I was kind of asking that question to you folks that did that for the veterans, because it's, it would seem to me an easier initial route would be an advisory.
It, it could be. I think the two are a different, I think the Veterans Commission and the DEIA Commission are two different things because really you're focusing in the Veterans Commission, you're just focusing on basically one subject, veterans. You know, it, it's just, I think the DEIA, you're focused on all kinds of different things. You know, we're talking about what, four different things just in the name. So I, I think it's going to be a very difficult commission. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it by any means, but I, it may be the advisory board to, or the advisory council to the mayor is a good starting point. I, I don't know that. I think we should figure out how we're going to, you know, and how we're going to get people on either one of them.
Hey, Kim. The, the mayor indicated that he wanted to weigh in and we've been talking about this for, for some time. Would it be okay if, if we got his thoughts before we continued our conversation?
Yeah, I also saw Marcus. Marcus, did you have something you wanted to say, say?
I, I did have something I want to say, but I, I will, I will stipulate and let someone else speak first. Cause I, I want to kind of hear where that goes with it. But I, I, I do want to weigh in on this. So I'm, I'm here, but I just, I'm going to wait till, I'm going to let the other council member speak first. And I like to hear what the mayor has to say on it. And then I will jump in. I'm very intrigued with this conversation. I feel like there's a lot to be said here. Um, but I just kind of want to hear a little bit more comment before I weigh. So I want everyone to get their thoughts out and I will weigh in after that.
Thank you. Thank you, Marcus. Mr. Mayor.
So, great discussion on this. For me, I see that if we do an advisory council, that we, it creates an opportunity to be much more nimble. You know, the ability to meet monthly or the ability to meet every other month, be able to sit down with folks from across all walks of life within the city and talk to them about, this is what's going on in the city. This is our current projects. This is where we're going in the future and then be able to get feedback from those folks in a much more timely manner than a work setup work plan as a commission would have. For me, that makes much more sense. And I think it would have more value than a commission. The, and then the other opportunity I think that we have with an advisory council is, and I like Mary's idea, and I think we should implement it is, is having cultural sorts of activities within our city, but have them planned out and said, and maybe that's a subcommittee of the advisory council that, that could be set up. And again, much more nimble, much more able to react than a committee, than a commission would be that would need to follow work plans and Open Meetings Act and all those other issues. You're on mute, Kim.
Sorry. Everybody's spoken except Marcus.
I'm, I'm probably leaning more towards having a commission. I want them to be closely aligned with the city. I want to have the input. We've had a lot of stuff going on in the last year, year and a half, and I like the input. I want the mayor to be apprised. I want him to be knowing what's going on with this committee. I want us all to be able to hear what's going on as we make decisions moving forward. So I, I'm caught because I see both sides of the story. But at the end of the day, I, I think having a commission of people who are working together. And I, I think it's kind of a, we're can have it both ways, if I were to be honest. Someone who's advising the mayor, keeping them up to date, a commission, just like the Veterans Commission, who is doing great things, who we're making traction, I feel. And the same thing can happen vice versa. So for me, I, I kind of would like to see a commission more so than not. As this is a group that is helping us make a path forward, I think, in a lot of different ways. So I, I'm more towards going to a commission, being able to advise us, being able to advise a mayor, but also report to the council in general and let their voice be heard and help us understand or maybe what I don't always know. So that's where I'm at. I'm, I've heard a lot of great comments tonight and trust me, I see both sides of it, but I'm, I'm more towards this commission has worked really hard to want to be their voice be heard in our community and want to keep moving forward. And when you have a voice that's strong, I think we let their voice be heard and help us make decisions moving forward as, as we go into uncharted territory in our community and we're doing, we're going to probably become the fourth largest city in Snohomish County. And everything's changing around us. I think this voice is a great voice for us to be heard moving forward. So I'm, I'm probably more towards a commission that is working with us, advising the mayor and reaching out to all of us all the time and helping us to understand our different needs as we continue to grow unprecedented, you know, in our community. So that's where I'm at. I just think we're growing in so many different ways and our community continues to grow so differently than we've seen before. I think it's a good opportunity to embrace new decisions and new thought processes and to hear different groups be heard. So that's where I'm at.
Okay. So which way, you know, what, what do we want to do as a council on this? Do we say go forward with the commission and go that direction? Or, I mean, I'm hearing from most of us that we want a commission, but that, that's what I'm hearing most, but I, I mean, I could be wrong. I think that if we took, we can't take a vote, but you know, what's the head nod? On for which.
I think the head nod is to go move forward with the commission as this is really going to help us move forward stronger as, as a community, as a council and get a lot more people to weigh in. And a stronger voice than what we need. So that's where I'm at. I think I, I hopefully after I've heard everything, I'm more towards we need a commission.
I guess I think especially because some of the concern is around how, you know, it's a heavy lift and this is kind of a big deal. I think the more structure we can put around this from the beginning, the better off we're going to be. And I think we have other cities to look to. We don't have to recreate the wheel. We have diversity commissions in several of our neighboring cities. I think we, you know, we have relationships with those folks and we can let, let them help guide us. But I think the, I think more structure in the beginning is better than less structure.
I, I really liked the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago where the Marysville mayor got on and told us how much he felt like this has really helped. And how it's opened eyes. And that is what we need moving forward too, as we continue to grow. And we be, continue to become a bigger community around the lake and a bigger city. So that's where I'm at.
Marcus, Marysville has an advisory committee, not a commission. So.
I, I, I understand they have advisory committee, but he also acted and he told us how important that group was. I'm just saying we are going to take bigger steps moving forward is what I'm thinking as we continue to grow forward. We need to take steps, maybe not what Marysville is doing, but we're taking steps that Lake Stevens feels is appropriate.
Nobody is diminishing the importance of moving forward. It's a matter of the avenue as to how you move forward. And so, I mean, that's, that's the area that we're discussing. So nobody's diminishing the importance of this.
Angie, Angie, which cities have a, a commission?
So off the top of my head, the Linwood, Mculteau, City of Everett.
Everett has an advisory council for the mayor.
Okay. I have a list. Can I get that back to you? I know, I know that off the top of my head, Mculteau and Linwood do. And I feel like there's two more, maybe three. So let me, um, let me find that and I will send it to you. I think it was part of the BIPOC presentation as well.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you, Angie.
With the mayor, I guess since since the mayor, you would be responsible for implementing this, correct?
Correct.
I guess I would defer to the mayor as to what he would like to implement.
Well, it's still a resolution. It has to go through the council.
It is. I, I just, having been a commissioner, I could tell you it's a lot of hard, thankless work. And I can see why the Veterans Commission experienced a lot of burnout and a lot of the other commissions have experienced a similar thing. And so I just, I think agree with you, Kim. I think there, whoever was saying the, the value of what's there. You know, I just think Sean brought up a lot of outstanding points about the challenges associated and the virtues of it. You know, so it will be interesting to see how that goes forward, whatever action we decide to take, whether it's a commission or a, an advisor committee.
All right. Well, it's getting late. It's eight 35. We've been at this for two and a half hours. Not this particular conversation, but the entire meeting. Mr. Mayor, you've got the input that you've heard from everybody on this subject. Uh, it is up to, really up to you on what comes forward to the council based on a we would need to get your involvement with the staff involvement and try to figure out what a resolution would be and what we want to go on that. So hopefully we've given you enough conversation to help you make a decision on which way the city needs to go.
Yeah, Kim, I got it. I appreciate everyone's, uh, great, uh, it was very good, very good conversation. And I'll bring something forward to the council.
All right. Uh, that is the last thing on our council on the agenda for tonight. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order, the good of the city? Go ahead, Sean.
I'm sure by now everyone knows that we're still in phase three.
I should have known better than to have you talking about anything.
Just, just a moment for the, the other job and all of our sanity. If you haven't gotten vaccinated, if you're considering getting vaccinated, you don't even need an appointment anymore at any of the mass vaccine sites. If you need, if you have mobility issues, you can contact DM. There are mobile teams to go out. They're trying to work and coordinate with schools, with anybody we can to get people vaccinated. So that is the fastest way for us to get out of this and get everything open. So we can get back to our normal lives. Until you get vaccinated, make sure that you're wearing a mask, washing your hands, watching your distance and doing all those things that you need to do da- daily. Stay safe.
Thank you, Sean. I appreciate it. Anything else? Okay. This meeting is now adjourned.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night. Good night, everyone.
Good night, Marcus. Have fun.
Yo.